Okay, so welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of September 20th, 6:00 PM. I see that we have both of the other members here, and I know that we're looking for those other minutes. I saw that. Thanks for following up on that.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Did you see, I don't know if Corinne wrote back to everybody or not, but she's going to do the IT search tomorrow, so likely by next meeting we'll have all of the backdated minutes ready.
Perfect. Okay, so since we don't have any minutes to approve, public speak time to speak on any item that is not on our agenda, and just so everybody knows what's on our agenda, is request amendment to the ordinance, storage of unregistered vehicles, and what we're going to be focusing a lot of our time on tonight is the city ordinance amendment, vacant storefront ordinance. So if you want to speak on anything other than those two things, now is the time.
Oh, what ordinance are?
Oh, so what we're going to be discussing is vacant storefront ordinance and the storage of unregistered vehicles.
No, I was just coming to just voice at the Bethlehem House and hope that ordinance wouldn't be getting passed.
So you can speak on that?
Yeah, right now as public speak, if you want to.
So I'm Shelley Horner from East Hampton, and I don't know if many of you guys have actually gone to the Bethlehem House, but if you actually go there and do a walk-through, you'd see what an amazing organization this place is. All the women there do everything by donations, and literally all they do is the work themselves. They hand knit stuff, they crochet things, they help mothers that decide to choose to have a baby. People don't usually go there because they're trying to be deceptive or anything. They're going to them because they're in need of newborn items for babies, all the way up to 18 months. And, you know, this ordinance has brought a lot of, opened up a lot of people's eyes in the city that we didn't even, I didn't even know what was there. I really didn't. I found out about it because of everything that happened and because of the vandalism that happened at their place, and it was pretty terrible. I saw it because I live right down the road from it, and it was really heartbreaking to see that happen to such an amazing organization and for somebody to do that. It's pretty malicious and evil. But I just hope you guys take the time before you guys pass an ordinance with it to actually go there and see what they're about, meet the people, and understand what that ordinance is going to do, because first they're all donation, like volunteers. So they're not going to have the money to pay fines if you guys try to imply fines on them. And if there was no complaints in the community for them, why are we passing this ordinance to begin with? Just because somebody else had to pass it in another state or another town, why does East Hampton need to do it when we don't have this issue already with our residents? I just feel that it's unfair and it's really basically targeting them because they're the only one in the area that is, falls under this kind of a ordinance structure that you guys are trying to impose. And if it's going to be deceptive practices, let's take out them as a whole and just do it across the whole entire town, like any business deceptive practice, whether it's Planned Parenthood or anybody that's being deceptive in general. Why can't we make it a general blanket deceptive practice ordinance and take it out of that specific wording that targets them? I think it's just really unfair, and I don't understand why we need to pass an ordinance if it's not an issue either. Thank you.
Just so you know, as far as procedure here, since this is public speak and that item's not on our agenda for tonight, we can't say anything back.
For this, tomorrow.
Other than thanks.
Just for the record, can you spell your last name?
F-O-U-R-N-I-R.
Everybody else?
I'm Fran Sharon. I live on Overlook Drive in East Hampton. I'm here to get the council people to please don't vote on this ordinance, to get that to go forward. I printed out the Bethlehem House website. I've read it a number of times. There's nothing deceptive about this. I don't know if you guys have been on the website. There's absolutely nothing in this that is going to lead a young lady to believe that they're going to be able to get an abortion here. So I don't know what the deception is. It's all about pro-life. It's all about nurturing support. Birthing centers, baby supplies. Do you know life begins at the moment of conception? It's like this lady has said before, they're operating on a shoestring budget from the Catholic Diocese of Springfield and donations. There's so many things on the site to click on. Oh, fundraisers, geez, because bad budget, can you volunteer? Oh, jeez, there's nobody there to help them. So for Us program, Knit for Us program, it's all good stuff, you know? And there's the word Bethlehem House. What is Bethlehem? It's where Jesus Christ was born. He wasn't aborted. And right from the website, "Choose Life." That's right on the website. "My God, Author of Life, Father of us all, how you cherish life. We come to you on behalf of the unborn and all those who those lives are threatened in any way. We ask for your protection and these precious souls. Fill the hearts of those who would harm them with the love and compassion that only comes from you. The love that embraces all, the young, the old, the healthy, the sick, and the best of us and the worst of us. May we like you choose life from Bethlehem House." If someone, some young lady is, wants to have an abortion, there's plenty of sites in the area, and OBGYN, places all over the area, Planned Parenthood. We don't need to be attacking a place that's going to be helping people go through a pregnancy and supplying them with the support that they need to get through it all. And that's all I can say.
Thanks. All right. Anything to say, or?
Yes. My name is Bob Sass, S-A-S-S. I live at 3 Windsor Circle. I've been, as most of you know, I've been involved in this since the ordinance first appeared. I'm pro-life, but I'm not going to talk about pro-life today. I'm talking about business and being smart, okay? You, each of you, have been given your office by the taxpayers of East Hampton, and you've been done so, you've been given this to protect the residents of East Hampton. I was shocked to read in the newspaper that to justification that Owen Zerrett put forward for even bringing this ordinance up was because Planned Parenthood asked him. As far as I know, Planned Parenthood has no assets in the city of East Hampton, okay? You're not listening to the people of East Hampton. Two months ago, this was sent back to the ordinance committee, and the purpose for sending it back to the committee is for you all to do something. Now, you can omit it from your agenda and hope it dies, but it's not going to die. It's up to the people on the ordinance committee to stand up, do the right thing, and bring it back to City Council that you've come to the conclusion that you're going to withdraw the ordinance, because you know what's going to happen. And as a resident of the city of East Hampton, I am very worried about it. The city of East Hampton, as soon as, if they pass that ordinance, is going to be a party to a federal class action lawsuit, and it's being funded by very, very deep pockets. People that have experience, know-how, and funding to bring it all the way to the Supreme Court. The Bethlehem House happens to be the poster child for pregnancy resource centers. They never do anything wrong. For 15 years, they've operated there, and have you ever had a complaint? And anybody going on that property and thinking they're going to an abortion center on the property of a Catholic church are not very bright. So it's time for you to stand up for the residents of East Hampton, who, let me remind you, that 30% of your constituents belong to Our Lady of the Valley. 30%, 5,000 people. To placate Planned Parenthood? Does that make any sense? To subject the city to a lawsuit that could run into multiple millions of dollars very quickly? And I've had private conversations with Owen. Oh, well, it would get dismissed. They don't dismiss lawsuits based on constitutional rights. They have to hear them. Just discovery and depositions would more than pay for the school board's deficit last year. It's time to stand up, do the right thing, and do what you were elected to do, and that's represent the constituents, the people of East Hampton, not Planned Parenthood. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. So we're going to jump right into the agenda here. I was hoping that we were going to have some EDIC folks. I know that Gwen had told me that we were going to have some EDIC people coming in to talk about the vacant storefront ordinance. And since we don't have any, I did invite the planning commissioner, or the building commissioner.
So I want to look.
Well, I didn't get back, they didn't get back to me. I invited them for tonight.
All right. I'm just going to say this, like, and I'm, you know, this is not acceptable. I know, I know, it's not you, it's not whatever. We are the city council of the city. Like, when we want agents of the city to show up at board meetings, they should show up or they should expect some uncomfortable conversations the next time they come up for reappointment. We have asked three or four times. This is ridiculous.
We've gotten one email back with the changes we went over last time.
Yeah, and I do appreciate that email, but it's not even about that. It's about, this is not the first time this has happened. And it's not, I'm not just, I'm not trying to call a specific person out. This is not the first time that we've asked an appointed official of the city of East Hampton as a council to appear before a committee to advise on a matter before us and have been, well, ghosted.
Ghosted.
It's not okay. It's something that, I just need to say that. I'm not questioning this individual's ability to do their job on a day-to-day basis. I'm sure they're quite good at it. I'm sure that's why the mayor hired them. But at the end of the day, like, I just, I'm not, I'm not trying to be overly cranky about this, but it's just, it just, it gets me, it rubs me the wrong way when we are attempting to do city business when there's a volunteer committee that put a lot of work into trying to put together an ordinance.
Yep.
And it's not, and it's, it's being stalled because a appointed official whose appointment we confirmed is refusing to participate or to acknowledge our requests.
Right.
That's, okay, sorry. I didn't mean to make a whole thing about that, but it kind of pisses me off.
So, and there have been some other updates around this as well. So I did, because last time we talked about checking in with the clerk's office.
Mm-hmm.
And to be frank, I don't think that they're interested to take on more, just like, you know, nobody's interested in taking on more.
Well, yeah, no one wants more work for no extra money. I get that.
So that's their initial answer is, you know, and the reason is because apparently a lot of the storefronts in town don't actually get business licenses. Yeah.
I think Tom would be that of the point, and I love baseball, so.
Yeah?
If we use the same logic, that we're not going to increase the load of work for people, what we're doing here?
I mean, it's true. So, but I think it does make sense for us.
Because we create ordinance, and what does that have to do with law?
Yeah.
Police have to enforce it.
When there's a new law, they have to enforce it, yeah. So I think we have to be mindful about the level of work to make that as clear as possible and to make sure that we find the right place for this to end up, you know? So that's, that's an initial, that was, you know, I wasn't saying, hey, we want you to, I was saying, what would you think?
Sure. I mean, end of the day, we're going to make a, no departments are going to be, they're not going to be like, give us more work.
That's just not how it works. Yeah. So, so that, you know, so one of the things that I was thinking as we, there's, because I think that right now is probably the biggest sticking point, is how do we enforce this? How do we maintain the registry? How does it get updated? Who sends the letters? Who does the collection? Right? So there's some moving pieces here.
Yes.
And so I think there are a couple of ideas that haven't been quite floated yet. So one would be, does this fall under the purview of planning department? You know, is this something that could potentially be split between the clerk's office and the planning department for various aspects of it? But then the complication with that is when you split things, then communication lines need to be developed, and that's where breakdowns happen. So, Tom, go ahead.
I think that one thing that is important, so, okay, two things. First of all, as much as I totally agree with, with what you're saying, President Gomez, I also think that when we're talking about an idea that is going to involve like some bureaucratic steps, I'm definitely interested in talking to the folks who'd be enforcing that, because it could very well be that they say, oh, well, doing it like this would actually be a nightmare. There would be a ton of work, but you can do it like this, which would be easier. That's, thus my frustration at folks not.
I'm not saying, I think you took it the wrong way. I think that I'm talking about when department heads or people in this city complain that we are giving them more work. I think it's part of our job to sit down with them and figure it out, and if we have to add more work to them because then the community needs it.
Yeah.
It's not because we want to, it's because the community needs it. We're doing something good for the community. They have to be on board, because that's why they are here. And that's what we pay them. And that's my point.
Yes. So we're totally on the same page there. I guess I just think that, like, I am actually really interested in the input of these folks, because when we're going to give them a task like this, it's, it is going to be extra work, and it could be that they say, well, doing it like this would be hard, doing it like this would be easier, and maybe that's worth considering before we, and, and also, this has been something that has happened before, where this committee has put forward ordinances that then, like the Board of Health, for instance, has come back and said, we can't really.
We can't enforce this.
And so we've, and then we've had, we've had to go through the work of then amending that, and that at times has been challenging. So, but the other thing that I, I just wanted to say is, I think it also should be noted that this is actually a revenue-generated ordinance, right?
It is.
And so if it's something, and we have a number of part-time employees across several city departments who, I mean, I don't know, maybe they are part-time and that's the exact number of hours they want to work because of their family obligations or whatever, but it's not necessarily impossible that, this could be something that we could actually use to, to support extra hours if it's going to be extra work. Is that something that we, that there's somebody, whether it's an existing employee or additional part, I mean, probably not like a 20-hour week step, because the president could probably fund a few hours extra.
Right, and this would not be a huge amount of, Counselor, uh?
So maybe it would be beneficial to have a conversation with the director on the Council on Aging, because we have the Senior Tax Write-Off Program, and I wonder if the skillsets associated with what it would take to manage this database would be something that someone in our community could do in, in exchange for, you know, tax credit. So, you know, I, to me, it doesn't sound like the actual task itself is very difficult. It's just that, you know, we have all these city employees who, they just only have certain amounts of hours in their work week that they can possibly do, and the types of departments that we would normally be asking to do this just happen to be the three that are the most overworked, right? The building commissioner, planning department, and the clerk's office.
The clerk, yeah.
So, you know, maybe that's something that we explore, because it probably is just, you know, 10 or 15 hours, which seems like it's in line with what that program kind of offers, so.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, I mean, really, it's, it's not, the amount of work that it would be is pretty minimal after the first 10 hours of work, which is identifying, sending the letter, and then, you know, making sure that they're all updated with correct names and addresses and whatnot, you know? I mean, after that, it's kind of like, so then it would go to the, the tax collector, because there would have to be the collection of revenue.
Yeah. The thing I think where, or I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The only thing for me that I think is like, we, I still don't think, well, if the, what Barb said does sort of complicate things though, because we had this initial thing saying, how are we going to figure out when buildings are vacant? I mean, is there somebody who's going to be checked? Well, the business licenses, but apparently...
Right, which, that's not, so that's what she said to me.
Is it not a requirement?
It's not a require, I, apparently not. And she said it's hard because LLC, which is weird, because my business is an LSA, LLC, and we have, we have got a business certificate, but, and you have to renew it every four years, and she said a lot of people don't renew it. And so I don't, I don't know if that is just something that's not enforced because we don't have the staffing to, to do that, or if it's just, you know, not a requirement. You get it, I mean, you, something like, you do need to get it for insurance purposes and things like that sometimes. But what she said was that it's not a perfect measure of actually what businesses there are. So, yeah.
So for the benefit of myself and the public, can you please tell us where we are in that ordinance, like, do you use a...
So, I mean, we're, I would say we're at a place where it's pretty close. I mean, there's a couple of things that we need to, like, come to a final agreement on, but, you know, we, we put in a decent amount of work on this.
Another reason that the committee is still working on it is because the department heads aren't even showing up today?
Well, well, we waited for a few months for the building commissioner, and then I reached out to Jeff. He couldn't come to tonight's meeting.
Yeah, he, yeah.
He's coaching.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if he's there either, because he is coaching his daughter's team, I guess. So, you know, really, we need to make sure that this can be enforced. The EDIC came to us with this, with the building commissioner being the enforcement agent. But from what we're seeing, that it doesn't necessarily seem realistic as far as like the workload, just because our building commissioner is flat out. So we tried to come up with some creative ideas. Now, there is another solution we haven't talked about, which is a third party. There is, it's called Munisah Reg, and it's a third-party business that does this for cities, that do the enforcement. They send out the letters, they do the collection, and they take a cut. So, I mean, that's one that we haven't talked about, and I don't know if we need to talk about that yet necessarily, but it's on, you know, it's, it's one of the options that's out there. Now, as far as where we are, we have, I mean, we've done, I feel like, a decent amount of updating to this. The only thing that I wanted to check in with you guys that we haven't really discussed, and this came up as we were talking about, well, what if the person isn't a person who owns the building? Which happens a lot.
Like, it's an LLC.
So, it's an LLC, so it's shielded. And so that's going to, that's going to require another level of investigative, you know, by whoever's the enforcement agent. They're going to have to figure out who is the actual owner, or owners, in order to make sure that we get it to the right people. So I wanted to make sure that we accounted for that in our language, because right now, what we say is, all registrations must state the owner's name, property, street number, storefront status, vacant lease, sold to another owner, property type, industrial office, restaurant, retail, square footage, property, owner or financial institution, possession, mailing address, email address, telephone number, and phone type, property manager, as applicable, 24-hour primary and secondary telephone number. That's all we have so far. Yeah.
I might be being really naive here, in which case, please, correct me. But, like, I've got a little, some, like, a small number of assets in an LLC somewhere, but I would assume that if that LLC were to incur a fine, right, if that business were to do something that would incur a fine, the fine would just incur to the LLC, and whatever the LLC's contact info would be, and then how that gets paid out, whether it's out of the LLC's asset or out of the assets of the owners, is not actually really, like, they, that's just their job to figure it out, like.
No, I think, I think you're right, but I do think that there is, if they don't pay, it's not always super clear who is responsible.
So, right, if they go like, you know, years and they're accruing thousands of dollars in fines, like, there's probably somebody we want to talk to, I think, maybe.
Yeah. So there are, so, and that is, it can be, not just LLCs. LLCs are pretty easy. You can look up an LLC and you can generally, you know, in the state of Massachusetts, you should be able to see who the proprietors are. But there are real estate groups that are much more difficult to find out exactly who the individuals are that own, if it's like, if it's a trust, or if it's, I'm trying to remember the name of, there's a specific name and it's escaping me right now. But, so I think that we just need to make sure that we are clear about making sure that we know exactly who owns the property, whether it's through an LLC, you know, or a group of owners.
Right.
We, that's built in. So when we gather that information, that's information that is recorded.
Right. There has to be some contact address, contact person, right?
Yep.
Regardless of whether it's a trustee, or like an owner, or whatever.
Yeah, Secretary of State's office has all of that information.
Yep.
And I believe all of it's public, correct?
Hmm.
I'm sure that there's some sketchy ways to get around that. I mean, I'm not saying that anything in, in East Hampton is owned by some like shell company from the Bahamas or whatever, right?
Right.
You know, that, that could happen some.
I mean, I can just say from personal experience, I was trying to figure out who owned the property adjacent to my property, and it was a, it was a group of owners, and it was, it was not something that was easy to find.
Oh, okay.
It was not something you could just look up. And the address, I mean, you got, it was able to, easy to find an address, but it was a personal address to, you know, someone who might be involved with that land trust. So.
And so are you saying that in, in order for this ordinance to move forward, we need to create some kind of language that takes this into account first, or is this something that?
I think we can just add that, you know, you know, I think when we send this to Mark Tanner, ask him, you know, what the appropriate way to phrase this is, but to make sure that when we create a registry, it's not, we don't put the name of the LLC on there or the, or the group of the people that own it. It's the actual owners of the property. And so it's very clear who's responsible.
This is a good point you're making right now. Mark Tanner is going to review this, and he is like a, I think this is the sort of log that is really like his.
Up his alley, yeah.
So I'm sure if we just say, hey, we're aware, like, could you just pay some extra attention to this paragraph and make sure that this isn't going to leave it vulnerable to something like?
Exactly. And that's why I put, just as, on the ordinance, I put in a note. And so I think we need to add provision here if the property is owned by an LLC or other entity.
Okay.
So that's, that's the note that I put in. But, so Omar, just so you know, what we have come up with is an annual registration fee if you have a vacant storefront in the downtown business district. So that would be Main Union Cottage. Question?
Doesn't matter the size of the building, of the space? So if I have a huge space, this will be slightly the same or like a tiny one?
Because the, the registration fee is the registration fee for the, the work to get all the information and put it on, within the registry. So that's $500.
Okay.
And then, that's for the first year of vacancy. So if the property goes... And then, that's for the first year of vacancy, so if the property goes vacant for a whole nother year, and it resets if someone goes in, and that doesn't, you know, then they, it's, you know, they're off the registry, that person goes out of business, ninety days goes by, they haven't filled it, then, the next year, they would be assessed the same amount, but if it's consistently unoccupied, there, it compounds, and we got this, I believe, from New Bedford, so then the second year would be seven hundred and fifty, and the third year would be a thousand dollars, so if you have a chronically un, and you're not trying to lease it, you're just letting it sit for a loss, then it compounds year after year, and it ends at a thousand.
And then every year will be a thousand?
Yes, yeah, um, now, so that's, and if they don't pay, then it becomes a lien on the property, so that means before the building is sold, that lien would have to be paid to the city. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay. Um, now, one of the things that you, that is actually beneficial, is if there is a vacant storefront, and someone comes to East Hampton, this registry would be published online, so what does that mean? It means that if you're coming to the city and you wanna try to open a business, then you can look on the city's website, and you can see a list of open buildings that are for lease, how much they cost, who the contact person is, so it's kind of a clearinghouse, so that way, people that wanna open businesses will be able to open a business, you know, find a spot that's suitable for them, um, so the other thing is, there's ways to waive the fee, first is a financial hardship, so if you can document a financial hardship, you waive the fee, um, the second is to work with ECA and the city planner to do a public art exhibit for the benefit of the community in the vacant building.
So, and that will be how, and who's gonna be liability, if something happened?
So, it's, it's passive, there's no entrance to the property.
No entrance to the...
It would be in the windows.
Outside?
Art would be displayed in the windows, the art would be inside, people would be outside.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Like in art gallery, like...
That's probably something that Mark had to...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
Obviously, like, so much going in the building.
Nobody would go in the building, other than the artist putting up the exhibit.
Exactly, so...
Yeah, so I think that...
So, the artist is gonna be in the building?
Hmm, I think that would be covered...
So, that's like, who's gonna be...
For liability, that would be the businesses, or whoever the owner's umbrella policy would cover that.
Oh, that's smart, dude.
Yeah.
Check on that.
So, this is maybe some, another opportunity for collaboration in the near future, so in the appointments committee, we just recommended the appointment for Mr. Kutcher, who used to be the chair of the Northampton Arts Council, and, so he's familiar with this ordinance in the way that we're drafting it, specifically relating to displaying art, and so he said that he has a series of best practices and pitfalls that Northampton experienced, because they did a similar thing.
Yes.
So, I think, you know, when he, if, I should say, when he, if he gets approved...
Yeah.
...to be on EDIC, he would be a valuable person to bring into this conversation, because he would be able to, you know, kind of suss out some of those issues, or ways that they worked around it, so...
Absolutely.
That way, we don't have to do trial and error and duplicate, duplicate work, so yeah.
I think that'd be great.
Yep.
And, you know, one of the things I wanted to put out there is there, you know, that was, so the idea of the art being displayed was something that other communities have done, um, and I know that the, let me just open this really quick, because I think that it was Arlington, Arlington, Mass, that was one of the things that they found worked really well, and it's, it's something that a lot of the communities that passed this had, has done, and, you know, basically, just kind of spruced up what could be potentially a dirty window with, like, just like chaos inside, it helped, because the whole point of this is, you know, vitality of the downtown.
Yeah.
And so, when you have half of the, of the buildings completely empty, it kills the vitality, um, and so, having some sort of things for people to look at as they walk by, is the idea, to try to increase the, the marketability for the other places, right?
Again, I'm just, and again, maybe something that Mark can answer?
Yes.
Because now it's an ordinance that I'm forcing, in a way, a business to let their artists to go inside, so who's, who's gonna be...
Unless they wanna pay the four hundred dollars.
So, who's, who's...
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah, 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 so...
But, it's not that I'm against it, I'm just wanna be clear of that.
No, absolutely, no, I get that, um, now, there is, there, um, there is more to this, um, and so one of the things is, as we want to try to minimize the number of vacant storefronts, recognizing the fact that some of those vacancies could become a nuisance, and could be condemned, so this was Tom's idea, was to make, to assess, if it, the building is condemned, then there would be, let me see if I can find it, and it's an additional condemned building fee of five hundred dollars per year.
So, it's gonna be five hundred, the first year, plus up, five hundred, so it'll be a hundred and...
So, four hundred to registry, and then, if it's condemned...
Five hundred.
Right.
So, it's, you have to do something with it?
They have to do something with it, you know, and, and, um...
And those, I'm sorry?
Yeah, go for it.
And those five hundred dollars will be every year, too?
It would be compounding every year, I mean, yeah, so then the next year, if they didn't do anything, it's seven fifty plus five hundred, thousand plus five hundred, and it's not the hugest fee, but, you know, it's, it's enough that you would take notice of it, but not so much that it would keep you from doing anything with your space, right?
Yeah, my main thing here is, I just don't want somebody, like, speculating on land in East Hampton, and they might still decide this is profitable to do so, but, you know, we can get that data and respond to it, but that there's at least some, something a little bit annoying there to get people to be like, hey, that falling apart building on Main Street, who knows, like, what sort of horrible environmental threats are in there, like, maybe it would be a good thing for you to sell that if you don't intend to do anything with it.
Well, and on the flip side of that, you know, as, apart from economic vitality, and, you know, the vibrancy of downtown, there's also a, a public safety piece to this, so the public safety piece is, if you have an empty building, and you don't have someone there on a daily basis to steward that empty building, you don't know what necessarily is gonna happen in that bit, especially when you have utilities that are on, you have, you know, all sorts of things, you have people that could potentially, if it's condemned, people that could get in there, squat there, could cause a lot of issues, so that's something that we wanna try to address within this, and obviously, there's a lot of building code stuff in here, so it would be the building commissioner, who, which is why we initially reached out to them and thought they would be the best enforcement agent, but, you know, Tom did have a great point, like, they're busy on the field, they're not in their office that often, like, you know, sending letters saying, hey, your property's vacant, and so that's, that's the reason why we're kind of trying to find that next level of who's gonna spearhead this, and, because it, it does, you know, if you look in town, you have a lot of vacant storefronts.
Yeah.
If we can entice people to lower the rent enough to get people in, that could change, you know, the makeup of what's going on, so, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, just to build on, I think you've done a great job summarizing this, like, I feel like I'm, in part, like, when you say, like, this has been going on for a while, like, I think one of the reasons for that is that what I've been trying to get to the bottom of, with all of this, just before I feel comfortable sending it forward, are sort of the mechanical questions about, like, so a building becomes vacant, how does the city become aware that the building is vacant? Like, that's the big, that's the really big one for me, and then, like, yeah, whose job is to send that letter, and, and just that, that sort of, like, because I've just seen this happen with our plastic bag ordinance, it was like, we kinda had to do that twice, because we, you know, we thought we had an idea of how that was gonna go, and then there was some pushback, and so that has been, I think that's why I was, I'm sorry if I was a little snippy earlier, but, like, if that, like, it's because I don't really want, like, I think that the, like, the fines that we have are reasonable, I think that the, uh, the hardships that we have are reasonable, one thing that I proposed, I don't know if it made it in the final draft or not, was that the city council, and, I mean, we don't actually need, we could just do this, like, it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, but that the city council, if there's, like, an economic crisis, there's gonna be a law, and we just, we know, like, we don't wanna be punishing people in bad times, we could just vote to suspend this for a year, and, so, like, that, that's, I don't, I don't wanna unduly put people in, in a bad situation, but I also don't want people speculating, you know, I don't, I really don't want a Northampton-type situation, you know, where it's like, there's just nothing to do there anymore, because every building is owned by one of three people, and they're speculating on the property, and, so, like, that kind of stuff concerns me, um, but before I'm, I don't wanna send this out there and then have it come back, because the, the relevant authorities say, oh, well, we don't get that information, but before we can just clear that last little vault, we need to talk to the people who would enforce it, I don't, like, there's no other way around this, so, so that's kind of where we are.
That's where we are, and...
And where we've been for a while.
I hope that person show up, so...
Let's hope so, I, yeah, um, so anyway, one of the things that I thought would make sense for us, we did talk about this a little bit the other time, last time we talked about this was, as far as inspections, I know that the building commissioner felt like, the building commissioner should do all inspections, I felt, especially as we were talking about condemned buildings, like, the police chief, if there is a, a building that has been broken into by people that are not supposed to be there, should be able to look around and say, this doesn't seem safe, I feel like we need to call in the other people, and make sure that this is boarded up, and we, we do address that in there, the fire chief, if there's a fire hazard, should be able to say, this isn't safe, and the health director should be able to say that this isn't safe, we need to, and so, while the building commissioner felt like that was the role of the building commissioner, I put police chief, fire chief, and the health director in there, just so they, so there's clarity about, if they have any concern, obviously, they'll probably call the health inspector in, but they should all have authority to be able to say, this isn't safe.
Right, right, my hope is that whoever the point person is on this is familiar enough with these things, that if they're not sure if something's a fire hazard or not, they'll contact the fire department and say, this kind of looks concerning to me, what do you think, like, and same with, like, you know, oh, this, is this a public health, is this a public health threat, like, well, we should...
Someone was in here hoarding, and, like, you know, newspapers to the ceiling.
Yeah, and also, you know, it frees up some of the bandwidth for the building commissioner, because that department, I believe, is just one person, right?
One person.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is, you know, this is stuff that all of these other departments already do.
Yeah.
They have the training, they have the experience, so, I mean, this is kind of a no-brainer, that we let these types of departments have some kind of preliminary inspection, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so, one of the things that, I put, when I reviewed this last, I put in some notes, and, so I talked about the LLC piece, I just changed a little bit of wording here, so failure to register a vacant property is what I added, after being notified by the city of such vacancy, shall be subject to a hundred dollar per day fine, right? So, I don't think it would be fair for us to be like, oh, this building's been vacant for six months, so we're gonna retroactively give them a, you know, a fine a hundred dollars a day, we should have to notify them first before a fine is...
And there should probably be some period of time...
There should be, like, a...
...to do the paper, thirty days, or fourteen days, or whatever you want to call it.
I think that that would make things a little bit, because we're not, that's not the point, the point is not to try to, you know, use a stick to get people, we wanna entice them, we, like, the carrot is, hopefully, let's get your place back, you know, on the market, back vibrant, if we can, you know, but in some cases, we know that they have no interest in that, so, you know, there has to be something, but I, I just wanna, in, like, so full disclosure, I just put that in there, I think after being notified is an important piece of that.
I think that's good.
And then, as far as the, so, this, this goes back to waivers, owner may apply for waiver of the annual registration fee at the time of registration of the vacant property, and upon receipt of annual registration fee invoices each year thereafter, requesting a waiver of some of the, some, or the entire fee on grounds of demonstrable financial hardship, or by agreeing and writing to display public art, as defined herein for the term of the vacancy, and I just wanted to say, like, is, do we have any other ideas aside, like I said, or use the property for other, some other public good, and, you know, because I, and I was trying to say, well, hmm, what could that be, and I, but, you know, we have minds here that can potentially think outside the box, and, and maybe we, there's something we haven't thought of.
It could be something that comes, I mean, maybe we could say, or some other, I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna, it's so vague to say, like, or some other...
Some other great thing.
But, like, if they're, like, you know, like, okay, for example, like, during all of this, like, during what, everything that's happened the last few years, if there was a place that was like, hey, I've got a vacant place, and this health department can post up there once a week for a vaccine clinic, like, I would be like, okay, great, like, we're not gonna, like, yeah, whatever, that's fine.
Yeah, or we wanna have a pop-up farmer's market in the space, and, you know, you're welcome to set up the tables, because it's empty.
Yeah, if they make the space available for the city, or for some nonprofit, then that's fine with me, I mean...
And I don't know if we need to do that, I just thought that it might be, you know, art exhibit is very narrow, but it's also very easy.
Yeah.
You know, so, because I think Omar's point of liability, if we did have a vaccine clinic in there, there, that might go beyond what their umbrella policy is for the, for the space.
Well, sure, but the city has...
And, and the city has a decent umbrella policy as well, so, but I didn't know if you guys wanted to go down that path and, and explore that type of option, or if we just wanna leave it the way it is, but I put that note in there, just, so, and, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
Right.
But, think about it.
Right.
And we can resolve that the next time we, um, hopefully, when we have the...
Yeah, I'll think about that.
Building commissioner with us, let me just see if there's any other notes that I posted in here, okay, I don't, that was the last one, um, so, you know, I think really, the idea here is to see, we need to sit down with the building commissioner, I would like to have either Jeff or Jamie with us at the table.
I'd like to have Barb there, too.
And I would like to have Barb there, Barb is, unfortunately, she just got back, and she's leaving for a conference tomorrow, so...
Yeah.
She wasn't able to get here tonight, which was understandable, so...
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I think that, you know, we've spent enough time on this, that we don't need to try to rush it out the door, just because we've had it a while, let's do it right, and let's make sure we get all the folks on board, um, the way we need to, so, any other thoughts on this?
No, I don't think so, I mean, I think that's good for now, if you think it's good for now.
I, I think that's a decent place to stay, now, the other piece of what we have on our agenda, something we haven't talked about yet, um, and this is something that I've heard about for a long time, um, from the police chief, because it is something that has been an issue in the city, which is, we have, in our ordinances, we have the storage of unregistered vehicles, which is prohibited if it's more than one, right? So, you're allowed to have one unregistered vehicle on your property?
You got your demolition derby car, or whatever.
Yeah, and the crux is, and this has actually been held up, so, because it's been challenged, is if you cover it with a tarp, the way the ordinance is worded, that car doesn't exist, it's like object permanence.
Ah.
Yeah.
What is the specific words, Jim?
That explodes my neighbors.
So, what we have here is, we have a, we have a fixed in front of us, so it's like, so I'll just go through it, A is keeping more than one unregistered vehicle, assembled or disassembled, except by a person licensed under general law, which is basically a mechanic, including residential or business, shall be unlawful unless a motor vehicle is stored in an enclosed building or otherwise out of sight of all butters in public ways, so that was the sentence right there, otherwise out of sight.
Throwing a tarp on a piece of...
Out of sight, right?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, this section shall not apply to motor vehicles which are designed and used for farming, industrial, or construction purposes.
Right.
So, here's C, this is the fix, placing a car cover, tarp, or other material over the vehicle, in which the vehicle can still be identified as a vehicle, is not considered out of sight for the purposes of this ordinance, and whoever violates any provisions of this section shall be subject to the penalty of fifty dollars, and ten dollars per day for each violation commencing ten days following the date of service of written notice from the police department. notice from the police department. So, you know, really what this is, is it's a fix to try to make it so you can't just throw a tarp over your car. I just wonder, you know, if we want to dig into that wording a little bit, just to make sure that it is going to do the job that it's, we want it to do. Right? So here, I'm going to read it again. Placing a car cover, tarp, or other material over the vehicle in which the vehicle can still be identified as a vehicle, that piece, in which the vehicle can still be identified as a vehicle is subjective. Right?
I mean, I guess if the enforcing authority is bothering you about it, it's because they got...
They identify it as a vehicle. So I just want to make sure that we're, that that wording is clear. You know, it's, it's not considered out of sight for the purposes of this ordinance, which I think is fine. So the only thing is, in which the vehicle can still be identified as a vehicle. That's the one that I, is when I read that, I was like, hmm. Like, what if, like... Yeah, like, you know, what if the car has its hood up and its trunk up and it doesn't have any wheels and it has a tarp over it? You know, like, that doesn't look like a vehicle.
Well, I think it's going pretty good.
I mean, you sound a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I don't know. Like, if that...
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there because...
And where's this language coming from?
Chief Alberti.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that, yeah, he's been, he's been dealing with this for a long time, so, you know, if he feels that it, I think it's probably good. I just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence and dug into that because it is a little subjective.
Yeah. It is a little subjective, but I guess he's the one who's been going...
Common sense.
Well, so maybe that is sufficient.
It might be sufficient. But I mean, this is the kind of thing, I don't really think we need to spend a huge amount of time on.
No, I mean, it's, we already have the ordinance on the books, it's already been debated, there's already been all of that on this, and, I mean...
And there's only two changes.
And, right, and the changes are basically just closing a loophole, so I don't...
Yeah.
I mean...
So, so the first change is, you know, kept on any premises, including residential or business. So let's just say the double, what is it, D, double D auto or D auto on the rotary?
Yeah.
D and D auto, right? So let's just say that that is a business, right?
Right.
And you have multiple unregistered vehicles there, it would apply to them as well.
Well...
But...
They might be licensed.
They could be licensed.
In which case...
In which they, they can have as many, but I don't, if it's, they're closed, I don't, I don't know if there's still license, though. I don't know. I'm just saying that, like, that is one of the new pieces, including residential or businesses.
Well, if they're, if they're closed, then they should probably get...
The car...
If that was a thing, if there's a closed business that's left behind a bunch of unregistered vehicles, they should probably clean that up.
Yes.
That would be my initial thought.
That is, that was my initial thought, too.
I also think that the police department is not going to willfully invest tons of resources to go out and look for things that look like cars.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's just, I don't, I think this is meant to just address the egregious...
Yeah. It's, oftentimes, it's a complaint driven, too.
Yeah. I mean, my, my neighbor does this and there are tarps over the car and it actually looks worse than if the tarp wasn't there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I can allow that, yeah.
What about car dealers, like, they can do...
It wouldn't apply to them.
Oh, okay.
No, so they would be, chapter 140, section 59, they would be, they would be licensed.
Or body shop or...
Yep. So it covers all mechanics, body shops, car dealers, all of them. Yep. So, you know, I think that this is the kind of thing that we don't have to necessarily have a huge debate over. If you guys, if you all feel good with that wording, like...
And they were going to say more than one car?
Yeah, so more than, anything more than one.
She get one.
You have one unregistered car that you can work on in your backyard.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Give it opportunity to someone who bought a car with a hobby.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And if you do...
And have it outside because I don't have a garage with it.
Yep.
And I want to work on it, give it opportunity to me to work on something that I love.
Well, and if you have the property and your butters can't see it and it doesn't a but, a public way, because, I mean, this says, unless the motor vehicle is stored in an enclosed building or otherwise out of sight of all butters in public ways. So, I mean, you could have a bunch if nobody was near you, you know?
I certainly, growing up where I did, had a number.
Yeah. No, but I'm asking more than, I'm asking more than, on here.
Yep. And you want to work on a Camaro or something, you're good to go.
You can also register it.
You could always, you could always register it.
I know, but I'm...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, if your plan is to put it on the road...
Yeah, but if you don't have the money to do it, but you want to have it at home because there's a hobby, again, it's a hobby.
Yeah.
I think that would be allowed.
Yep. I know, and since this did come from Chief Alberti, I feel relatively comfortable, other than that one subjective line, I feel, it's like...
I guess if, if they, if that subjective line is causing trouble, then...
Well, yeah, I mean, if...
They're going to be the ones that...
Yeah, they're going to have to deal with it. If it is a problem, then they can always just come back to us and say, hey, this, this isn't, isn't holding up when we take them to court.
Right.
Right? So...
Yeah, all ordinances are iterative, we can always revisit them.
Can always revisit them. That is absolutely true. So, it's, I, you know, I, I think that we could easily move this tonight. This, I, I, and I'll leave it to the president. I don't think this is something that necessarily needs attorney review since it's already been vetted, it's already, you know, it's an existing ordinance, it just changes, you know, this one piece. But I, you know, I wouldn't hurt, but it, that's a lot of money for something that I don't know is necessary. You know, so I'm, I'll, I'll put that out there.
Oh, that was something, just, just to be sure that, that the police won't enforce that.
Yeah, yeah. So you, this was in the September 7th agenda?
Okay.
So if you want to...
And you don't change anything?
We haven't changed anything.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think what we can, I mean, we could vote on it tonight and pending attorney review, we could bring it forward after we get word.